The board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Iglesias. Alderman Koltar. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Valmer. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Todd. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vacoro. Alderman Norrion. Alderman Con. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro. President Reed. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Iglesias. Alderman Koltar. Alderwoman Rice. Alderwoman Howard. Alderman Rhodey. Alderwoman Davis. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Con. Twenty-two present.
Quorum being present, we will be led today in prayer by John Watson Jr. of Maple Temple, and, uh, have, who has become our resident pastor. We quote from the Holy Scriptures, "But there is a spirit in man, and the breath of the Almighty gives them understanding." Gracious God heavenly Father, with gratitude of heart and mind we start this session. As we serve the citizens of our great city, we continue to open our hearts and our minds to your inspiration. Breathe on us, so that we may know how to administer justice, peace, and equality through our laws and our statute. Then will all of us experience the understanding and knowledge of your goodness toward all your children. Into your arms we commit ourselves, our families, our community. Join me in round applause for Reverend John Watson, who continues to volunteer his time so graciously to this board. With dispense with line item three, introduction of honored guests, any introduction of honored guests. Alderwoman from the twenty-second.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to welcome our honored guest, Ms. Rowena Horick with Care St. Louis with the animal facility. I guess I pronounced it right, did I pronounce it correct? Okay. And I want to encourage the Alderman of the city to take pictures on October the thirteenth, and it's to encourage adopt the parents. And so Alderman who did not go through the leisure room to sign up, you can fill out your form and give with me, and give it to me, so we can get you signed up for pictures. And it can be animals of cats or dogs. So I know some people don't care for cats, but we have dogs also. So I just wanted to ask everybody to please support Care St. Louis in their adoptive process and hope that we see a lot of our Alderman there. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We also have Alderman from the seventh to the twenty-third.
Me?
Yes, we'll take it.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board.
I don't know, I don't know which one of you stood up first, but, uh...
I'll, I'll yield to my colleague from the twenty-third.
Alderman from the twenty-third.
I, I really did, I just was gonna piggyback on what she said. I'm not allowed to bring any dogs home alone and taking a picture. And if anybody is really mad at Louis, send him a cat.
Yeah, yeah.
I actually, I actually did that once, and he had to leave the dais because he was swelling up.
Yeah, highly allergic to cats. Alderman from the seventh.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to have as my honored guest today Abby Faust. Abby's up in the gallery. She's a senior at St. Louis University, resident of the Seventh Ward, and will be attending law school at a place to be determined next spring. She's hiding behind this pillar over here, but thanks for being here today, Abby. And also, I'd like to wish Dave Sweeney a happy birthday, if he's up there in the gallery somewhere.
Happy birthday to Dave Sweeney, and welcome, Abby. Alderman from the fourth.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the board. I'd like to have as my guest today, my committee woman, Dwyndlyn Evans, and my special guest is Sharon Tyus.
All right. Any further introductions? Any further introductions? Any further introductions, going once, going twice. Alderman from the tenth, like to wrap us up.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the board. We're gathered here on September twenty-seventh. This is a famous day in television history. All three of the Alderman from the twenty-thirds' favorite shows premiered in nineteen sixty-two, sixty-four, and sixty-nine. The Beverly Hillbillies, Gilligan's Island, and the Brady Bunch. He'd been lost without them, that was how we grew up. That's why we have to talk to him like we do now. But more importantly, this is Hug a Vegetarian Day, so while you're all getting your picture taken with a pet, grab a tomato and give it to your favorite vegetarian, even though it's a fruit. Thank you.
Approval of the minutes.
Approval of the minutes, September twentieth, twenty nineteen.
Alderman from the tenth, you recognize on approval of the minutes.
Okay, break up the lecture. Move where you approve the minutes from September twentieth?
Move by Alderman from the tenth, entertain a second on that motion. Second invite Alderman from the ninth, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in A, B, and C of the agenda, and has been placed in the Alderman's mailboxes. Dear members of the board, I have, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for appointment and reappointment to the Cherokee Community Improvement District. The appointment of Mr. Ronald Strawbridge, a business owner operating in the district whose term will expire on March sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. The appointment, appointment of Ms. Katie Burris, a tenant representative in the district whose term will expire March thirteenth, I'm sorry, March sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. The reappointment of Ms. Deja Venice, a business owner in the district whose term will expire March sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. The reappointment of Mr. Jason Dean, a business owner operating in the district whose term will expire March sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. The reappointment of Ms. Jessica Douglas, a business owner operating in the district whose term will expire on March sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. The reappointment of Mr. Cobb Rosany, a business owner operating in the district whose term will expire on March sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. The reappointment of Mr. Mike Glodeck, a property owner in the district whose term will expire March sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. The reappointment of Mr. William Lieberman, a property owner in the district whose term will expire on March sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. I respectfully request your approval of the appointment. Sincerely, Lyda Cruz, Mayor.
Alderman from the ninth, you recognize on the mayor's appointments to the Cherokee Street Community Improvement District.
I thank you, Mr. President. I move that we accept the mayor's appointments to the Cherokee Street Community Improvement District.
Move by Alderman from the ninth, entertain a second. Second by Alderman from the seventh, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries.
Dear President, President Reed and members of the board, I respectfully, I respectfully submit the following appointments to the Board of Freeholders as required by the Missouri State Constitution, Article Six, Section Thirty-A and Thirty-B. Abdul Kaba Abdullah, Bridget Flood, LaShawna Lewis, Tanya Allen Mason, Joseph Holds, Reverend Earl Nance Jr., Eddie Roeth, Jerry Schlitzer, Dan Zabrowski. I respectfully request your approval of the individuals listed above.
Alderman from the tenth, you recognize on the mayor's appointment to the Board of
Uh, thank you, I... Move that we assign this to a committee?
Uh, to Ways and Means.
To Ways and Means Committee.
It's been moved by Alderman from the tenth, entertain a second on that motion. Second by Alderman from the twenty-third. Alderman from the first.
And object to that and say that. Where people come, when they, when the members of the Board of Aldermen have to come, when we have to decide if they're proper people, is to the Rules Committee. And this should be a proper placement in the Rules Committee, not Ways and Means. It is not about money, it is about qualifications and who should sit on this board. And if we, the Rules Committee, are supposed to look at the qualifications for the members of the Board of Aldermen, then that's also where it should be, to look at the qualifications for this Board of Freeholders, which nobody here has ever been through. I actually came right after they had failed at one, and it is a very serious thing that we are about to attempt. And we need to spend the time, and the Ways and Means, they're about financing, and this is about qualifications. And I object to it going to the Ways and Means, and we request that it be sent to the Rules Committee.
All right. Any further discussion, any further discussion? Alderman from the third.
I would just like to, good morning, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to second, uh, the, the words of the Alderwoman from the first. It's extremely important that we make sure we vet this process the correct way. There's a lot of things going on in the city, and we all need to be aware of the different players that are involved in initiating this process. And it needs to be something that is thoroughly checked by every single one of us within the board. We need to make sure that every member that is on this list is somebody that we all agree with, is, is people that we can trust in this process. So I believe it does need to go to the Rules Committee also. I one hundred percent think that we all need to be involved in whatever committee that it does go to and show up to that hearing, so we're not arguing about it on the back end on a Friday. We need to be extremely informed and sending the letters, mayor, I mean, sending the mayor's letters on what it is we think and who it is we think needs to be appointed, and why the ones that she has selected may or may not. And, uh, once again, I second those sentiments. She said the second committee should be in a, in a governmental affairs. One of those two, either way.
Yeah, I, I don't, I, I don't know, and I don't think the primary sponsor has, you know, any brothers. I think that he would be okay almost, you know, on any of these committees. Yeah, that's, that's my impression.
Don't, don't think it's about the sponsor at all. I think everybody means well, but we just, you know, these appointments came from the mayor. So we need to make sure that we are involved heavily in the process, and it goes to the right place, and it's extremely vetted. I don't agree with half the people on this list. So just wanted to put that out there.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the twentieth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. While I agree that these appointments and vetting them is a very important process, I do want to just offer the, the following perspective. We have the ability to appoint nine members to the Board of Freeholders. The St. Lo, St. Louis County Government has the same ability to appoint nine. The governor has the ability to appoint, appoint one. If the City of St. Louis doesn't appoint any, it is my understanding that the Board of Freeholders could move forward without us, without any appointments from the city. There could be, um, so I just want to offer that perspective and be cautious in that we do make sure that we put forward some candidates and some members of that board, so that the city's perspective can be included in that perspective. While my colleague of the twenty-third is standing, Mr. President, may I inquire of the Alderman of the twenty-third?
Alderman of the twenty-third, will you yield a question to Alderman from the twentieth? Alderman from the twentieth, please.
Thank you. Alderman, uh, I was just curious, have you found Gary?
Thank you. You know what? Even though it's way off subject, uh, we actually have a couple sightings, and I do believe we are gonna, actually, Gary, Kevin Klein called me, and I believe we, I believe we do, I think we probably will.
I think we're all, we've all been, we've all been following this story with bated breath, and we all, I, I would personally like to commend your, your spirit and your care for, for those who, who are unhoused among us.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the twenty-third.
I just, just a couple things. One, I agree that we, no matter where this goes, we need to vet it. I don't have a problem either way, but one of the reasons I seconded it, and as far as I know, there's a motion and a second. I don't know how we're entertaining two motions, but I'm on Ways and Means, and there's a couple names on there that I absolutely, uh, one in particular that claims to be independent that there's no way under, that I could believe he's independent. So maybe from a, a, a personal standpoint, the reason I kind of like it over in Ways and Means is I'm on that committee. I'm fine either way, but I do think that, again, I just want to explain why I believe Ways and Means, because I have knowledge of some of these people, and, and I disagree with some of them. And I also was kind of amazed that the signatures were done that morning, and I found out in the paper that the mayor appointed people. You would think a letter would've came over, you would've think something may have happened. And again, I have some issue with some of the names on this list, so, uh, from a personal standpoint, you know, and, and if what we're discussing is whether or not to keep it in Ways and Means, and that's what I thought.
Yeah.
Uh, so as far as I know, a motion's been made and seconded. I have all kinds of respect for, uh, you know, Alderman Bosley over there, we're, we're friends, but understand from a personal standpoint, I'd like to be in, see it in the committee. And Sharon, you know I'm fine with you, and, and you're good. Oh, Alderwoman, I, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you talk to me.
So, I mean, and I know that the Alderwoman from the first will do a good job. From a personal standpoint, I'd love to see this in Ways and Means, and I'm fine with wherever it goes, but I do want a voice.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the eighteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Honorable Board of Alderpeople. I support Alderwoman from the First Ward. I think it should go to the Rules Committee. Also, I think that, um, we need to send it to the Rules Committee, because we need to make sure that whoever sit on that, that Board of Freeholders are representative of the whole city. And I believe that the Alderwoman from the First Ward will make sure that that happens and that everyone is treated fairly. I'm not saying that Ways and Means Committee will not. Let me make that very plain, because I don't know everyone on there, and I trust and I respect every Alderperson here. But I'm saying that at this particular time, I think the Rules Committee, uh, will be Alderwoman from the first, uh, supporting that. I think it's a great idea, and I think we should take our time in, um, going through this process. In fact, I'm not, I'm at the point, I feel that in order to, it's better to do it right or not even do it at all. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Alderwoman from the first.
Mr. President, members of the board, I did not get up and, and say, oh, I want it to be in the Rules Committee, because I'm just on it. Also, the sponsor is on, on it. And also, I believe it to be properly the way it should be. The other committee that it should be, if not the Rules Committee, should be Intergovernmental Affairs, because if we're gonna start just assigning everything to who, who feels like they should have it, because they feel like they're on the committee, then I want the, I want Board Bill Number One, which is the, uh, budget to be sent to the Rules Committee. There has to be some rules about how we do things. And the Ways and Means in no way is a good committee to fit what we are about to do. This is about vetting of people who are gonna make some very important decisions. If we are, if we are the committee that are supposed to vet the members of the Board of Aldermen, which we are, we can actually say, no, they don't meet the qualifications. I know people don't know this. And we can say no, and you can't be sworn in. So that's the kind of importance that the Rules Committee has that people don't know. And so that is why I have said the Rules Committee, but I would even yield and say the Intergovernmental Affairs Committee, but it is not a Ways and Means, um, uh, decision that should be made. They have lots of things that should go to the Ways and Means, and I don't get up on this floor and say, oh, you should send this to my committee, or you should send it. But this is the case that it absolutely does not go with what the committee, standing committee says it's supposed to do. And that is why I stand in opposition to it, not because I'm the chair of it, but because it should not be sent to Ways and Means. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hold on for a second. Alderman from the tenth.
In light of the discussion and everyone's wishes, we, I will withdraw my motion to assign, uh, this bill to the Ways and Means Committee, and at your discretion, let you pick a committee that you feel better, sir.
All right, um, you withdraw your second, so we were looking at, um, at, at Intergovernmental Affairs, but, um, uh, I think the next best fit really would be Intergovernmental Affairs. I think that that would be a good fit for it also.
I do not, that would be the second, but I still think you need to look at what Rules does. I think most of the commissioners and people that we appoint should be coming and be vetted, but I will yield, because I don't want it to be about my committee, okay? And I actually sit on that committee.
Yeah, so send it to Intergovernmental Affairs. Yeah, yeah. You want to make that motion? Yeah, the other motion and second were withdrawn, and send it to Alderman Moore.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move that, uh, the nominations for the mayor to the Board of Freeholders be sent to the Intergovernmental Affairs Committee.
It's been moved by Alderman from the first, second by Alderman from the tenth, the ninth, the twenty-fifth, the twenty-fourth, of everybody. It's been moved, the second that we, uh, send the Board of Freeholders to the Intergovernmental Affairs, to Alderman Moore. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please assign the appointments of the Board of Freeholders to Intergovernmental Affairs, and then Alderman from the fourth will be scheduling some hearings on those.
So noted. That is extent of report of city officials.
With dispense with, with line item number seven, would anyone like to take any bills or resolutions off of any of our informal calendars? Would anyone like to take any bills or resolutions off of any of our informal calendars? We would dispense with line items eight through ten. Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize?
I, I move...
Alderman from the tenth, come over to the mic. Eighteen. Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize?
I move to suspend the rules in order to, um, introduce Board Bill Number One Hundred Seventeen. It is on, it is on everybody's desk.
It's been moved by Alderman from the eighteenth, to suspend the rules for purposes of in induction of Board Bill Number One Seventeen. I entertain a second on that motion. Second invite Alderman from the, from the third, any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Iglesias. Alderman Koltar. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Valmer. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Todd. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd, I'm sorry, Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vacoro. Alderman Norrion. Alderman Con. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro. President Reed. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Iglesias. Alderwoman Iglesias. Alderwoman Martin. Alderwoman Howard. Alderman Odenberg. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Boyd. Twenty-five ayes votes.
By vote, stay in the motion, Alderman from the eighteenth, and introduce Board Bill One Seventeen. Madam Clerk, please place Board Bill One Seventeen at the end of the first reading calendar.
So noted.
And assign Board Bill One Seventeen to Streets.
So noted.
Uh, yes, you can, if you want to, for One Seventeen. Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Alderman from the fourth would like to co-sponsor One Seventeen.
So noted.
First reading of Board Bills.
Board Bill One Thirteen, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, in ordinance approving the petition to establish a twenty-nineteen Grand Center Community Improvement District finding a public purpose therefore and containing severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill One Fourteen, the number was not used this session. Board Bill One Fifteen, sponsored by Alderman Moore, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate above-surface, surface, and subsurface rights for vehicle, equestrian, and pedestrian travel in the northern one-twenty feet of the fifteen-foot wide north-south alley in City Block Eighteen Eighty as bounded by Co-Brilliant, Grand, Aldine, and Spring in City of St. Louis, Missouri, as hereinafter describing accordance with Charter authority and in conformity with Article Fourteen of Article Twenty-One of the Charter and imposing certain conditions on such vacation. Board Bill One Sixteen, sponsored by Alderman Vacoro, an ordinance adopted and approved pursuant to seven-zero-point-eight-one-five revised statutes of Missouri, authorizing the police commissioner to make a contract on behalf of the City of St. Louis with St. Louis County, allowing St. Louis County to provide police services on metro-linked property within the city limits of the City of St. Louis, including exercising powers of arrest for criminal offenses and violations of the ordinance of the City of St. Louis, the same as possessed by the St. Louis, I'm sorry, by the police officers of the City of St. Louis, with the same immunity as if acting within St. Louis County and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Seven, One Seventeen, sponsored by Alderman Todd and Alderman Moore, pursuant to ordinance six-eight-nine-three-seven, an ordinance authorizing the honorary street name Pastor, Pastor Nelson Watts Senior and Rosetta Watts Lane, which shall begin at the intersection, intersection of East Cook Avenue and Jones Street and run north on Jones Street to the intersection of Jones Street and Page Boulevard. That is the extent of first reading of Board Bills.
Reference to committee.
To the Ways and Means Committee, Board Bill One Thirteen, to the Streets Committee, Board Bill One Fifteen and One Seventeen, to the Public Safety Committee, Board Bill One Sixteen. That is the extent of reference to committee.
Second reading.
The following Board Bills were reported out of Transportation and Commerce. Board Bill Ninety-five, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, an ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and Comptroller of the City of St. Louis, owner and operator of St. Louis Lambert International Airport, to enter into and execute on behalf of the City the First Amendment to Banking Concession Agreement, AL Two Seven Eight, between the City and U.S. Bank National Association, amending the Banking Concession Agreement. The First Amendment was approved by the Airport Commission and is attached heretofew as Attachment One, and made a part hereof, as its terms are more fully described in Section One of this ordinance, containing a severability clause and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Ninety-six, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, an ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and the Comptroller of the City of St. Louis, owner and operator of St. Louis Lambert International Airport, to enter into and execute on behalf of the City the Seventh amended and restated Food and Beverage Concession Agreement, AL One One Zero, with Host International, Inc., between the City and Host International, Inc., granting concessionary subject to and in accordance with terms, covenants, and conditions of the agreement, certain rights and privileges in connection with the occupancy and use of premises, which is defined and more fully described in Article Two of the agreement that was approved by the Airport Commission and it, and is attached heretofew as Attachment One, and made a part hereof, as its terms are more fully described in Section One of this ordinance, containing a severability clause and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Ninety-nine, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, an ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and the Comptroller of the City of St. Louis, owner and operator of St. Louis Lambert International Airport, to enter into and execute on behalf of the City the Second Amendment to Operating Agreement for Management and Operation of Parking Facilities Service, AL Two Six Seven, between the City and ABM Aviation, Inc., granting concessionary rights. the City and ABM Aviation, Inc., granting concessionary subject to and in accordance with terms, covenants and conditions of the agreement, certain rights and privileges in connection with the occupancy and use of premises, which is defined and more fully described in Article 2 of the agreement that was approved by the Airport Commission and is attached hereto as Attachment 1, and made a part hereof as its terms are more fully described in Section 1 of this ordinance, containing a severability clause and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 100, sponsored by Alderman Davis, an ordinance recommended and approved by the Airport Commission and the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the Mayor and the Comptroller on behalf of the City of St. Louis, the owner and operator of St. Louis Lambert International Airport, to accept and execute on behalf of the City a certain airport aid agreement offered by the Missouri Highways and Transportation Committee, I'm sorry, Commission, for the marketing and promotion of air service for the airport for maximum obligation of $500 and $15,000 for the reimbursement of direct costs associated with projects funded under the grant agreement and containing an emergency clause. The following Board Bill was reported out of the Public Safety Committee, Board Bill 105, as amended, sponsored by President Reed and the following Alder persons. David Vacoro, Hubbard, Middlebrook, Clark Hubbard, Pam Boyd, Norrion, Murphy, Gunther, Cone, Odenberg, Todd, Navarro, Green, Ingracia, Kotar, Jeffrey Boyd, Moore and Rice, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportionment, making a supplemental appropriation to the Annual Budget Ordinance 70963 for fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2019, and ending June 30th, 2020, amounting to the sum of $5 million for the purpose of providing funding for the Violent Prevention Alternative Program, Cure Violence and containing an emergency clause. The following Board Bills were reported out of the Streets Committee. Board Bill 86, as amended, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, an ordinance pertaining to the parking, to parking within the 4,400 block of Gibson Avenue Residential Parking District, establishing the location and restriction for curb parking in the restricted parking zone within the 4,400 block of Gibson Avenue Residential Parking District, authorizing the placement of permit parking only signs within the district and prohibiting the parking within the district of any vehicles which does not display the authorized permit containing definitions, a penalty clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill 91, sponsored by Alderman Vacoro, an ordinance establishing a four-way stop site at the intersection of January Avenue and Thelosen Avenue, regulating all traffic traveling northbound and southbound on January Avenue at Thelosen, and regulating all traffic traveling eastbound and westbound on Thelosen Avenue at January Avenue and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 92, sponsored by Alderman Vacoro, an ordinance establishing a three-way stop site at the intersection of Thelosen Avenue, regulating all traffic traveling northbound, Salford Avenue at Thelosen Avenue, and regulating all traffic traveling eastbound and westbound on Thelosen Avenue at Salford Avenue and containing an emergency clause. That is the extent of second reading, report of standing committee.
Alderman from the 26th, recognize.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the board. I move to suspend the rules in order to move Board Bill 105 as amended to the perfection calendar.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 26th, second by Alderman from the 23rd and the 24th, any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderman Hubbard. Alderman Ingracia. Alderman Kotar. Alderman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Valmer. Alderman Martin. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderman Murphy. Alderman Howard. Alderman Green. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Todd. Alderman Davis. Alderman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vacoro. Alderman Norrion. Alderman Cone. Alderman Clark Hubbard. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Navarro. President Reed. Alderman Tyus. Alderman Hubbard. Alderman Murphy. Alderman Howard. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Boyd. Twenty-five aye votes and one present.
By vote, stay in the motion, Alderman from the 26th. Madam Clerk, please place Board Bill 105 on the regular perfection calendar.
So noted.
Is that the extent of our second reading?
That is the extent of second reading.
We dispense with line item 14 and 15, Board Bills for Perfection.
I'm sorry. Okay, here we go. Board Bill 105, as amended, sponsored by President Reed and the following Alder persons. Davis Vacoro, Hubbard, Middlebrook, Clark Hubbard, Pam Boyd, Norrion, Murphy, Gunther, Cone, Odenberg, Todd, Navarro, Green, Ingracia, Kotar, Jeffrey Boyd, Moore and Rice, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportionment, making a supplemental appropriation to the Annual Budget Ordinance 70963 for fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2019 and ending June 30th, 2020, amounting to the sum of $5 million for the purpose of providing funding for the Violence Prevention Alternative Program, Cure Violence and containing an emergency clause.
Alderman from the 26th, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill 105. We'd like to move to perfect Board Bill 105.
We'd like to move to perfect Board Bill number 105.
Move by Alderman from 26th, second by Alderman from, 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 from the 6th to the 27th, 27th and the 23rd. Any, any discussion? Alderman from the 23rd.
Thank you for looking this way. I would encourage everyone to vote for this. I sat in that meeting, and John Mohammed Alderman Mohammed, and I'm sorry, I keep, I'm used to calling people by their first names, but Alderman Mohammed, Mohammed helped me chair that meeting, and the people that came in with pictures of their family members that are dead, that they never get to see again. You know, I went in with mixed emotions, I came out.
Alderman from the 4th. All right, can everybody hold down the discussion so that, so that Alderman from the 4th and others can hear the testimony? Please proceed, Alderman from the 23rd.
Thank you. So, people brought in people of dead relatives, tattooed to their arms. At the end of that meeting, any doubt I had in my mind was pretty much taken away. It came out unanimously. When you have those people standing in front of you, but I want to set the record straight on one thing, that the police association keeps putting out 8 million like it's all today, it's untrue. That's 5 million over three years, and if it saves a couple lives, that's a good thing. We, we spend more in lawsuits. This year, in the police budget, we have $5 million equal, and that'll be spent this year plus some for lawsuits. Maybe we'll save money in lawsuits, but we have 20 cosponsors, 25 people voted to suspend it. We could stand up here and debate this all day. I'm not going to call the question, but I do really think and encourage everyone to vote for this. We need to, as the Board of Aldermen, start taking care of homeless people, and we need to start taking care of people that are being shot. And if you don't believe it affects the 23rd ward in the City of St. Louis, which a lot of people don't, the crime is moving that way. So we need to fix the problem, and I 100% support this. I'm appalled at Jeff Rorda saying that because I support this, I'm not pro-police. I would say anybody in this room that feels supporting this means you don't support the police department, vote against it.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the 20th.
I agree with the Alderman from the 23rd. I think it's appalling that Jeff Rorda would say those things. I would like to be added as a cosponsor, thank you.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Add the Alderman from the 20th as a cosponsor. Alderman from the 1st.
Mr. President, members of the boards, Alderman from the 26th, we yield.
Alderman from the 26th, we yield a question to the Alderman from the 1st.
Yes.
Alderman from the 1st, please proceed.
Mr. President, members of the board, I voted present because I've been out of the loop because my stepfather died, and I was out of town for a long period of time.
Really sorry to hear that, Alderman.
I, that's, he went away peacefully, he was 91 years old, he's a good person. But when I came back, I did go to some meetings about Cure Violence, and some people had called. Then, a few days ago, because my question is about how does this work when we're spending $235 million a year on the police? Where does this money come from when we're not tearing down the buildings we should and we're not cutting grass? Is this money, so my first question I have, and I don't know if she knows, she's not the primary sponsor, and I know she's relatively new, is this money coming from the police budget since the police are yelling so loud?
No.
Okay, do you know where this money is coming from?
Yes, I actually have a report from the Budget Director, Mr. Payne, and it was from excess funds, excess bond funds, and the breakdown was 3.5 million from the general fund, 0.4 million from CGJC Special Fund, and 1.1 million from crime prevention programs that were already un-
Uncovered, so there were several different places where this money was coming from, as I understand it, right? Okay, I went to the meeting that Judge, Public Safety Director slash Judge Edwards had Monday, which many, most of us were there, and I listened to Mr. McAllister push his program. But he sold me too hard. I don't like to be sold hard with this, why, why would I want this? You want it because you get a contract, a multi-year contract. So when you say things like that, that puts up my antenna, and I start looking further. I then went and looked further because he talked, they honestly told us about it didn't work in Baltimore. But they didn't tell us that they used to be in Chicago, or maybe they told you, and that the Cure Violence changed their name from Ceasefire, which they didn't work in Chicago. So I started calling my friends, I've been around a long time, so I know the Aldermen in Chicago, and start calling people about what happened in Chicago, which is a tough place to be, actually. And so I'm not happy with the fact that they didn't tell us that they had been there in Chicago and that they changed their names. When you omit facts, then that is not a good thing for me. This is not a huge sum of money when you look at overspread out of three years, but to the Alderman from the 23rd who said, well, people came in with their pictures of their children and stuff, and loved ones has died, that's the same thing if we had this program or not. We are reacting because there are children, and children are very important, but it's equally important, all the other people that have gotten killed. It does not have to be children. People love people of all ages, if it's your husband, if it is your, if it is your mother, your father, whatever, and a lot of the people have been not children, but they have been young men, young African-American men that have gotten killed. So I still am not convinced that this is something that really can work. In my community, we had a little meeting about people that I respect, and they didn't understand why would we be paying people who cause problems to go out in the community, and we're, and we're going to pay them to stop the violence? Why don't they ever support the people who don't cause problems, who live in the communities? And so their question, they want me to ask is, where's the money for the people who are doing the positive things already, and why aren't you supporting us? Why aren't you cutting our grass? Why aren't you tearing down our buildings? Why are you letting our neighborhoods go down while you deal with this one little issue of violence? Because violence gets larger when you don't address things like tall grass, and you don't tear down buildings and things like that. So we're dealing with only shootings as though the rest of the world does not exist in St. Louis, and so that's what I have a problem with. I also wanted to know, at, when they came in to speak about what they were going to do, are there reports built in, and what kind of reporting will they be doing?
Okay, well, I'll start with the point that you made about Chicago. In previous meetings, they did speak about that. They were 100% honest about the mistakes they had made and what they had learned from. They told us that, of course, the foundation of ceasefire and how it had changed, but they told us that with, how would they move forward, I'm sorry, with the vetting of the people, which is what you just spoke to about using people that cause crimes. They vet them, they train them, they don't just put anybody out there, they don't just pay anybody, and I believe in that. And I just want to say, I mean, I recognize and respect not just your reservations, but a lot of my colleagues and my, and individuals' reservations, but right now is the time to try. I just think it's the time to try. I know they keep calling it a healthcare epidemic, health epidemic, and growing up under my mother, she was in public health all my life. I grew up running around Courtney Clinic. I've seen this, and I view it myself from a health lens, from a health perspective lens, but I think it's not just health, it's just wellness. We're not well, this is a wellness epidemic for the City of St. Louis, and I think that Cure Violence could be not the answer, but a part of the answer. The name, I just don't want you to get caught up with the name because just closest, closest Kansas City, Missouri, they have the Cure Violence model, but they call it Aim for Peace.
Correct.
So I think that we should, I, I'm just encouraged by all my colleagues coming together on this. I just spoke about this at a warm meeting last night, and I think that questions are good. It's an evidence-based, they told that they're an evidence-based program. We also in the bill have mechanisms set up that is going to come through public safety, that we're going to have monthly meetings, you know, things of that nature to keep track of it, but I just don't think that just throwing the whole program out or not supporting the whole program will help us be not even just reactive but proactive. This could be proactive in it, and there are monies, and I know that, I do have the more details on where this money came from, but what I don't have is details on the money that you said, that your constituents said, where is that money for that?
Because it's not there.
So I don't want to, yes, ma'am.
Because in fact, they tear up positive things in North St. Louis, not help them along, that's what the problem, you won't be able to find it.
Yes, ma'am, I know, you know I respect you, Alderman Tyus, so, and I'm not going to speak to anything that I don't know and that I haven't studied, and that I literally haven't just sat here and studied. So with that, I hope I answered the questions that you had, and if not, if you have any more, I'm open to them.
No, 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 my question that you did not answer is, so, so how, how will we, so we've been giving money to this other group who put signs that said, we must stop shooting each other and killing each other. They have never come in, and I'm being good because I'm not saying a name, because you all know I will say names, okay? They have never come in and showed us anything about what they got done, okay? And I tell them all the time, don't come over into my community talking about putting up a sign, because I'm going to put up a, where is it in your community? Where is it in your front yard? And show me how putting up a sign to say we must stop killing each other, and who is "we"? How about the police must stop killing us? There's all kinds of things. How about racism? How about economic racism? How about all these other things that you do not include? So, but they kept getting, they have been getting funds for years. People didn't know they got block grant funds and everything else, okay? I do know that, and people always say, well, we got to do something. So, but if we're just doing something so that the people think that we're doing something, but it's not stopping anything with violence, then I got a problem with that because we're fooling people, because in a year or so, they will come back and say, well, how did this, what have you done? So what are the procedures for making sure that they are held accountable and that they are actually getting something done? How do we check that instead of just whoever is going with the current mayor? Because that's what this other people did. Whoever literally went with the mayor, they got the money, and there was nothing that you can to this day show me that they've done, or that they can show that's a criteria, this is what we've been able to do.
Yes, ma'am, and I just want to speak to what you were saying, so that was what I was saying earlier about layers being to this problem, and we know that. So the policing, the poverty, the racism, all of those are layers to this problem, but in regards to Cure Violence, not the other program, I think what stands out for them is the community being a part of the solution. them is the community being a part of the solution, changing people's lives. It is evidence-based, it is under the Health Department, which again, with the upbringing I had, I think it, I agree that it was the best place for it. Again, the monthly meetings. I have seen this work without $5 million. I don't know if you know Reverend McCoy? Reverend McCoy gets on the ground and not-
I've been knowing him for-
Absolutely, I don't know why I would think you wouldn't know, you know everybody. But, I mean, so just imagine Reverend McCoy's program-
He's been out there for a long time.
Yeah, he's been out there for a long, and I hope, I pray, I hope he's a part of this. But I hope he's a part of it. I mean, groups like him, like Sankofa, Darren Seals of Sankofa, these people have been on the ground doing this program with no money, with no dollars, so just imagine, and making change. So just imagine the impact it's going to make with resources like this behind it. And I just want to add that Alderman Olenberg asked for the details of the numbers, and I do have them if any other of my colleagues want it.
Okay, are you going to put that in our boxes, or, you can have somebody make copies now and put them on our desk if that's right?
The clerk has copies for you.
Okay. I want to say, you're new, so when people are new, they come in and say, we got to do something.
Yes.
I'm not new, and I've been hearing that for a whole bunch of years, so that doesn't move me at all. Yes, we should be doing something, but we need a long-term policy that works. The things that you said, they have worked. The reason I asked about did the money come out of the police budget, because to me, this is also, it's a health issue and it's also a policing issue. We have been hearing for years about community policing. This is part of community policing, maybe not this, giving the money to the people who are actually in the streets, but parts of it. They have never really implemented community policing. They've done this and talked about it, but getting out those cars and being in the neighborhoods and getting to know the people, what they've done is the opposite of community policing. So I got here when we went to the three super stations, which all the members of the Board of Alderman said, don't do that. Because it doesn't get better with bigger police, okay? But they went ahead and did that. Then, under Dotson, we made the districts even bigger. The 6th District is ridiculous, it has no business existing. It should be cut in two, okay? It is awful. It goes from the chain of rocks down to Grand, it is awful. I was hoping that the new police chief, the first thing he would have done is say, this is how you can address this issue, this is ridiculous, I'm not going to go along with what was done, I'm going to change this first. So I like what you're saying, I'm still not convinced. I'm going to vote for this, not because we got to do something, and I'm scared to say no, because I'll say no in a minute. I'm going to vote for this, but I'm going to do it with a lot of reservations and with asking questions on and on and on. And my other question is, how do you, what if it's not working? What are the checks and balances that we say, well, this is not working, and so we need to put this money and stop this? Because it, everybody, friends will get these contracts, and once contracts get in the city of St. Louis, you almost have to cut off somebody's hand because they get that contract and they think it belongs to them. So how would we be able to say, this is not working? And what will we be able to do to stop it if it's not working?
I don't know the exact answer to that, I will refer back to the bill for that exact answer, but I will be honest, it's probably because what you, just what you said, I'm new and my mind is thinking, it's going to work, it's going to work.
No, 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 because they don't, they don't put it in there. Now, I will tell you, they don't put how to stop a program, they say, oh, we're going to monitor it. But there should be something, very specific language, that says, if they don't meet these criterias, A, B, C, D, then this money will be stopped and this will be ended, okay? I was voting, I was here when the Rams got that big loophole, I voted no about that loophole, the Rams used that loophole. We don't write good legislation. We had legislations that said, you cannot introduce a board bill without it having a finance component, and so then the alderman from the 22nd did it, would not give it to the committee, and then came and lied and said that Alderman Moore told him to do that, and we took it out of committee. So we don't write good board bills on purpose, because then we leave loopholes. So my thing is, I, I think we need to, even if we pass this, we need to come back and tighten it up and say, if you don't meet these criteria by a certain amount of time, we're not going to continue to just give people contracts, okay? So we can say, look, we did something. My other thing is, are we going to have just one program? It's just going to be Cure Violence? Because I had heard that we were looking at having several programs.
To my understanding, this is just the one program, Cure Violence, with several neighborhoods.
And has there already been an RFP put out?
I'm sorry, yes. I know you were speaking, I'm sorry.
You know what? So I'm used to, before this president, the president already came down and did his own board bill, so you're taking his head, he should really be down here, okay? And I'll tell him that. Sometimes when you're sponsoring a board bill and you've been the person running it, you should be down here and answer my questions, okay?
This is a hit, I think.
So I'm being very nice to you because you are new and young, okay? I won't be this nice from now on, when people ask you to sponsor a bill, you better make sure that they can answer the questions, because I will ask hard questions, okay? So, and again, I want to say, I am going to vote for it. I am very hesitant, I got a lot of more research I'm doing, and I do think that if this works, that we ought to take this out of the police budget, because there's no sense spending $230 million if we could have people that can do this for a lot less, which is what I used to say about that group that put the signs in there that says, we must stop killing each other. If they can stop violence with that, we can take that $230 million and do a lot of other things in the city of St. Louis. So I'm going to caution that, since you're doing this, and I'm going to caution the president, look at there, and we need to come back with some procedures about if it's not working. I can understand trying something.
Yeah.
But if it's not working, we ought to have some exact procedures to say, this is not working, and we're not going to just take this money and spend it because somebody has a contract.
Thank you, Alderman, and that's part of what we put into some provisions in this bill, and I think Gerard can answer those, he can update you on a couple of those things real quick. Alderman from the 23rd?
Yes, I just, real quickly, just to answer Alderman Tyus', I sent a letter to the Chief of Police, I want a full accountability, and it's not a nice letter, Terry sent it, I'm bringing him in front of the Public Safety Committee, it's a little off-subject, but we are going to watch Cure Violence. I talked to John Mohammed, who is on the Public Safety Committee, and he's agreed to monitor it, he's got to come back with a monthly report, and I would hope and say that that report should be published and brought back here. Having said that, and I don't see a lot of people standing up, if nobody has a problem, I'd like to just call the question.
Alderman, can you, hold, one second on that, because I think, I think the, yeah, I think the primaries, I think the sponsor has one update first, and the alderman from the 19th has an update they want to do prior to it.
Okay, then I'll, I'll withdraw that then.
Alderman from the 26th?
Yes, Alderman Tyus', I did just get the update on the question about the loophole that is very valid question, and what I was told was that, under the Health Department, they will be getting reports back, the crime stats back, and if they're underperforming or not performing, then the Health Department will cut them off. No one will be getting lump sums, but it will be fiscally managed under the Health Department.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the 19th?
Thank you, Mr. President. So our floor sponsor is speaking today. I don't have a question for you, but I would like to make a statement. Is that okay? One of the things that really drew me to Cure Violence was our citizens of the city of St. Louis. Because they're the ones that went out and did the research and stood tall on this, raised the money to bring them here to evaluate whether, because Cure Violence just won't come to your city, they will make an evaluation to determine whether or not they're a good fit. And so they came, they did the evaluation, they were in our communities, they talked to all kinds of community leaders with various programs, they talked with our city leaders, they made, they have to make sure that they can fit here as well. So that was another thing that drew me to this. But then I also talked to people across the country. I talked to Baltimore, and when the program representative was here earlier this week, she told the truth. And that same thing was told to me by the mayor and others there in Baltimore. The first go-around wasn't done right because they got in the way, politics got in the way, and they said, well, you know, I can do this, this way, and I can switch this. They didn't follow the exact program of Cure Violence. And they regrouped themselves and started following the program appropriately and allowed it to have its process and its evaluation process in place. And so now, it has worked, it has changed the culture in one of the worst neighborhoods in Baltimore. Now Baltimore loves the program, they're instituting it in four more neighborhoods, and it's moving like that all over. When Bloomberg started it in New York, it started with one program. Now they have it in 24 communities, and that's what it has to be. This is, what I love about it is, it's not trying to say, I've got the whole city, because you can't do it that way. You got to have a grassroots process that they have, and you got to change the culture in small communities, one at a time, and help alleviate crime. Because this is not anything that you can solve with police, you can't solve it with police. And along with that, what I like about the health component is, our hospitals, our social work departments and our colleges, all of these people will work with Cure Violence, and that is what we need. Now, many of you may not know that our major hospitals have gone ahead of us, because they identified it as a health problem. And so BJH already has a trauma program, so when someone comes there shocked, they automatically give them wraparound services. Not only do they help the victim, they help the family with everything that they need in order to change their lives. They're already there, they're excited about Cure Violence, they know Cure Violence, and they want to get on board and help us as a city with that. Our universities, they want to bring the researchers in to help get all, every kind of service program there is, and unite them, that's another problem we have. Everybody wants to have a fiefdom here in this town. You can't have a fiefdom, because you don't know all of it and you don't have all the resources. And so they want to help us do that, too, and we need the help. It is not just a policing matter, and our police want it. Talk to the police, don't listen to all that stuff on the news, because they, they're tired of looking at dead bodies, you understand? And that's the problem we have with retention, they can't deal with this anymore, they leaving. So we got a lot of things that we have to do, but this is a beginning of something that can really change our communities, give hope to these children, because we've already had over 20 of them killed. This is sinful that anybody would want to stand up and say, I believe that I should repair a car seat first. I was thrown, I was shocked when I saw that, I couldn't believe anybody would say that. Because we have funds to repair the car seats, it's in their budgets, we have a foundation for the police that will repair a car seat if it needs to be fixed. That is a trivial, ungodly way to present anything on behalf of a child's life. And you know what? As much as I support the police and making sure that they are respected and making sure that they are heard, that representative did them harm, because that's not how our police feel, that is not how they feel. That, he did them harm, and I think that, at this point, all of them need to rise up and do something about it. Okay? Because that's not how they think. I want to show you something. I've been on a mission for a while, and I told you all that, because you know what, I can't hardly take it anymore. So there's an artist that created a T-shirt, and I go and I celebrate with those children who achieved something. And it says, Mama, we made it. But do you know how many babies we have buried this year? Let's not talk about all the other years, but this year. Well, they will never be able to stand up and celebrate graduating from middle school, high school, college, getting married, anything, and say, Mama, we made it. We don't have that. All we have is grief and funerals. So at the end of the day, Cure Violence is a, is a big part of what can help us, but we've got to continue to find other things. We just kicked off Believe yesterday, AT&amp;T, they're letting all, their staff, anywhere they want to volunteer, mentor, whatever, they want them to do it, and they put a million dollars behind it. If you need to help somebody with their families, whatever needs to happen, they're there. So corporations have said, politics is in the way, and I'm going to help. Walmart said, forget NRA, you can't tell me what to do. The gun manufacturer said, you can't tell me what to do. I'm not going to produce those high-power rifles anymore. So everybody's taking up the mantra and doing the right thing by our communities and our residents, and we've got to do the same thing. I appreciate everybody who is supporting this, I think it's a good start, and I, I really am happy that it's going to public health, because we will get the data, we will have oversight, and then they can coordinate with all those other services that we would need with that program. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the 4th?
Thank you, Mr. President, I was going to stand, but Marlene gave the Gethseberg I have one problem with Cure Violence. I think the name is wrong, it should be Prevent or Lower Violence, but it's Curing Violence. Other than that, if it saved one life, one inkling of a life and stopped some trouble that's going on, while we were voting in Cure Violence in the committee, four people had died in my ward, on the quietest street I have in my ward in Hammond. And four, two people, a couple got killed on Hammond, and a couple got killed on Maffet. And it's not about just the children, it's all lives matter.
Yes.
All lives matter. And last night, I got a phone call from Bishop Blake and his representative, Robert Coleman, at the Church of God in Christ, 6.3 million people are joining in and partnering with Cure Violence. They deserve a round of applause. So if we can get anything done, promises, 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 and I'm glad that we're not putting the money in the same old pool, because who we've been giving the money to has not, it has not worked, and it's not the same old, same old, it's not working. And we need to move forward and try anything to stop one death would be okay. And I'm a member of FAS, Families Advocating Safe Streets, Jeanette Culpepper been on the field for over 25 years after the murder of her son. And we have some great ideas as to how we're going to help Cure Violence, cure whatever we can cure. But I think the name should be Lowering Violence, God bless.
All right, thank you, Alderman. Alderman from the 26th, you rec, Alderman from the 23rd? Alderman from the 26th, you recognize to close.
Before I close, I just want to make sure I answer Alderman Tyus' question about the accountability, because accountability is important to me, transparency is important to me. So what they reported was that all of their data and reports will come to public safety, and as a member of the Public Safety Committee, I know that we will get it out to all 28 of our colleagues. So thank you, Alderman Tyus, and I just want to speak again to the importance of this, working together with the police, working together with our circuit attorney, Kim Gardner, who I support, I think that a program like this could be a game changer. And in research, which I do share that passion with Alderman Tyus, we're going to take trips, so maybe you'll come on a trip with us to Kansas City and to Milwaukee, because I know, Milwaukee is what was reported as the closest crime city, the way it's ran and the way they work with the circuit attorney and the police departments, Milwaukee is the closest, but in proximity, Kansas City is the closest. That's why we chose Kansas City. So it's important, I'm excited, I'm encouraged by all my colleagues getting on board with this. President Reed knows, I got teased about it being a hit, but this is a hit that I would take any day for the community and for our city. So with that, I'd like to renew my motion.
All right, it's been moved, about Alderman from the 26th and 2nd, about Alderman from the 27th, 13, 26, 8, a little, a little bit, everybody, that we perfect board bill 105. It's been a request for roll call, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus? Alderman Middlebrook?
Alderman Middlebrook? Alderman Bosley? Alderman Moore? Alderman Hubbard? Alderman Ingracia? Alderman Kotar? Alderman Rice? Alderman Gunther? Alderman Valmer? Alderman Martin? Alderman Ornowitz? Alderman Murphy? Alderman Howard? Alderman Green? Alderman Odenberg? Alderman Rhodey? Alderman Todd? Alderman Davis? Alderman Spencer? Alderman Mohammed? Alderman Boyd? Alderman Vaquero? Alderman Orion? Alderman Con? Alderman Clark Hubbard? Alderman Boyd? Alderman Navarro? President Reed?
Aye.
Alderman Hubbard? Alderman Howard? Alderman Spencer? Alderman Boyd? 26, aye votes.
By vote, you stay in the motion, and Alderman from the 26th with your 26 votes and perfected Board Bill 105. Thank you all so much. Out of all my years at this, at the Board of Alderman, I've seen a lot of votes go down and stuff, and this one truly chokes me up. I cannot tell you all enough about, you know, what that means to me and other families that had to live through the stuff they had to live through. So thank you all so much for getting that one done. I'm so proud of all of you. Take a deep breath. Y'all don't be making fun of me next week. Man, but that, that was... Okay, all right. Give me one minute. We'll dispense with line item 17 through 19. Alderman from the 19th, you recognize on courtesy resolutions count. It's been moved by Alderman from the 19th and 18th. Second by Alderman from the 25th. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries. We've dispensed with line item 21 and 22. Ms. Lanis, unfinished business?
We have none.
Announcements?
Tuesday, October the 1st, 2019, Public Safety will have a meeting 10:00 a.m. in the Kennedy Room. Wednesday, October 2nd, HUD's Committee will have a meeting 9:00 a.m. in the Kennedy Room. And Friday, October 4th, full board meeting will be here 10:00 a.m. in the chambers. That is the extent of the announcement.
Any further announcements? Any further, Alderman from the 7th?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. This weekend, in addition to being the final home stand of the Cubs and Cardinals, we've also got the Q in the Lou Barbecue Festival downtown. Pitmasters from all over the country, right out Keener Plaza, grilling up some great food, so I hope you can make it down to the Q in the Lou. Starts tonight, all day tomorrow, all day Sunday. Thanks.
All right. Alderman from 13th?
Got everyone down to Cronkite Park for the Strange Folk Festival. It starts today and runs through Sunday. I said, "We have good food, arts and crafts, and excellent music, so please come down to Cronkite Park Friday, Saturday, and Sunday." Thank you.
Any further announcements? Alderman from the 26th?
Mr. President, members of the board, I'm trying to pull it up now, I'm sorry, because I want to make sure I get it right, but I know that everyone in the city is familiar with Mama Cat. And if you're familiar with Mama Cat and the work she does with our unhoused families in the city of St. Louis, I just want to invite everybody on behalf of her to her third annual Neighbors United Block Party down at Christ Church Cathedral's parking lot. It's gonna be giveaways, food, haircuts, games, resources, music, and fun, and just making sure it's humanizing and making them feel humanized and a part of our community. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the 4th?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I don't know, I can't find my secretary, but there's a tour of my ward today. If it's a tour today, if you're not scared...
Come on out.
...come tour the 4th ward about a half hour, and I'm not buying lunch. We don't have any money, and Sharon is buying lunch for you.
All right, thank you, thank you, thank you. Any further, any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the 10th?
Thank you, Mr. President. There will be a Ways and Means meeting next Wednesday at 10:00 a.m., which apparently will be a lot shorter due to changes earlier in the meeting. But I am asking to excuse the Alderman for necessary absence from the 5th, 14th, and
It's been moved by Alderman from the 10th and 18th. Second by Alderman from the 7th. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. A little late. Alderman from the 10th, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
I gladly make a motion to adjourn this meeting and come back on next Friday, which will be Good Buddy 10-4. Thank you.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 10th, second by Alderman from the 25th, and everyone. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose, stand adjourned.